Call to meeting, Maplewood City Council meeting Tuesday, October 13th. And the first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. I have the Pledge of Allegiance as number two.
Yeah, I do too.
Could be a roll call.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley.
Here.
Councilmember Fockingham.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Pardini.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to defer to the city attorney to explain that this meeting is being held under emergency circumstances.
Yes, thank you. I would just like to ask that the record reflect that pursuant to section 610.015 of the Missouri Sunshine law, it provides that members of a city council who are not physically present in council chambers can participate and vote remotely on all matters when an emergency exists. And I ask that the minutes reflect that we are still under the COVID-19 emergency orders, both state, federal, and local as well.
And I have one other. Jackie, did you want to modify the approval of the minutes as well?
I'll just make a suggestion that someone during the approval of the council agenda, someone moved to move the approval of the closed session minutes to, and I would make a 20 subsection one or A, so that the closed minutes are approved in closed session.
The question I have my, I don't know if you saw the follow-up email. We don't have a closed session scheduled for tonight, and we'd have to create another hearing. Should we do it the next time we have a closed session?
Do you just mean physically, we don't have a Zoom hearing because it's on the docket? Or I mean, it's on the agenda?
We don't have a Zoom scheduled. Like I have Laura, schedule one now if you'd like, if you'd like us to do that.
We can do it the next one. That's fine.
So we'll just want to approve the minutes of the open session from September 30th. And September, yeah.
And 22nd, I believe.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Pledge of Allegiance.
September 22nd, open session minutes, and are we also talking about the September 30th?
Can we wait until we get?
Yes, that's right. Someone should do that at point number five. That's correct.
Okay. Okay. I remember the next item then is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And next item is the approval of the council agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any discussion? Item number six is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant at 7469 Manchester and 2653 Lyle. Is there anyone queued up for commenting on this project?
We have no one with raised hands for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Item number seven is a public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a graphic and package design firm binding company at 3212 Sutton Boulevard. Is there anyone queued up for that?
There was a hand that came up at the end of that last one, so I don't know.
Hold on one sec here.
You don't know which one it's for.
Okay.
Well, I'll allow her. I'm going to allow her to talk. It is Brooke Baker. Brooke, unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, my question, well, I have questions and comments, but I live at 2628 Lyle Avenue. And isn't there typically a way to notify people in the community about the meetings? In the past, we've received notices for the property at the end of the block. But we never got a letter in the mail this time. There was nothing in the paper. I understand that there was already the zoning and planning committee meeting regarding this. That happened on September 14th. And none of my neighbors knew that this was happening tonight either. So is that the way normally this works?
There was a notice for people within 300 feet. Maybe that you weren't within 300 feet, and that notified everyone of the planning and zoning meeting, as well as the city council public hearing. The property was posted as well, and it was advertised in the paper. The other property you probably received for variance, the one further down the street, you were probably just within 300 feet of that property. That's probably the discrepancy.
Okay.
Okay. Are there any comments, Brooke?
Janet, do you have any comments?
Are we discussing the, that property now?
Yes. This is Janet Carpenter.
Also at 2628 Lyle.
Yes, Janet.
Well, we have a few concerns. We're concerned about parking and traffic, especially if this other house project is going to be worked on at the other end of the street. As it is, it's already difficult enough to turn out of, out of Lyle onto Manchester because people block the intersection. They come speeding down from the west end or the east end of Manchester. Would you consider putting up some sort of sign at that intersection just to make it a little easier with all the extra traffic?
We can absolutely add signs. That would be very easy to do if that would be a request of the citizens. We could absolutely do that.
Okay, great. Also regarding parking, parking is already somewhat difficult on our street, especially with that new house coming up. I know there will be eight spots in the lot, but we're concerned that there might not be enough to cover all the people coming to this new restaurant. Would it be possible to have like residential parking only signs also on our street?
There's actually going to be 25 parking spaces on the site, and it's going to be far in excess of what's required. There should be actually excess parking here. We believe this will help alleviate problems right now. Mr. King, the reason, that was one of the reasons that attract, this site was attractive to him because right now his existing business, side project seller, doesn't have a lot of parking, and it did spill over into adjacent parcels. So for example, when they do a, an opening or a tasting, this will allow overflow parking, and the intent is to keep vehicles off residential streets. If, if it proves to be a problem, which we don't anticipate because there's actually excess parking with this proposal, staff does monitor the street for typically a period of four weeks to six weeks. And we actually take license plates and try to find out who's taking up residential parking. In the past, we have made recommendations based on that, but that would be, you know, we'd have to cross that bridge when we get there. But right now, there are going to be 25 parking spaces for a very, very small site. So we believe it'll actually be ample parking for this proposal. We believe it'll actually help his existing business as well.
Okay, and those, that will be the city that will be sending staff out to monitor the parking?
Yes.
Okay, and those 25 spots, will that be on the, the lot that is currently vacant?
It'll be on the existing lot and the lot that's currently vacant.
Okay.
And I just want you to know, if you have questions, you can call me personally, and I can make sure I get what signage you're looking for in the future. And if there's problems with parking, please call me. My name is Anthony.
Anthony, okay, thank you. And then one last question. Oh, noise. We are a little bit concerned about noise. As it is, we're, we're close to Madge on Lyle. And if there are a lot of kids at the pool over on the other side of Big Bend, we can hear it. So I guess, well, first of all, I'm not sure what the noise ordinances are, but how late will this restaurant be open? Will the noise ordinance be enforced?
There are hours of operation. Is that what you're looking for?
Sure.
Mr. King, I can't see right now. Is Mr. King in the audience? He's going to be. Sean, can you see Corey King?
I'm looking. I do not see Corey.
Bill Barnes, is Bill Barnes available, Sean?
No.
Here with us a second, please.
Okay.
We're trying to get you an answer here.
Thank you.
As far as noise goes, I can tell you from the site plan, the seating is either going to be very, a little bit indoors, or it's going to be on the Manchester side of the building. There's also going to be approximately, you know, 45 feet to the rear of the building because it's basically taking up that existing lot. There's going to be a 10-foot transitional yard buffer with landscaping and either a six or eight foot sight-proof fence. We do have both requirements for noise, excess light. And so if noise is a problem, and they are in violation of our codes, we will absolutely enforce it. I don't anticipate it being anywhere near as loud as a pool. I know we do get complaints about the music a lot of times at the pool. I don't anticipate that considering the size of this site. You're just not going to be able to get that many people outside. A lot of this is, there's going to be a small drive up window, and a lot of this is going to be kind of carryout. In fact, this whole concept was essentially inspired by the coronavirus where Elmwood was having such a successful pizza kind of grab and go operation, and the side project was also having a successful, you know, a package delivery system. So that's kind of where this, this marriage came about amongst two existing businesses. If anything, we got more complaints about prior car dealerships. And I, I want to say the current car dealership we have there right now, we've had no complaints. But previously, over the years, we've had several other uses. We had a lot of problems and complaints with light and people parking vehicles down the streets. So again, based on the size of this parking lot, the location of the seating, I don't, I don't anticipate we'll have problems with vehicles on residential streets or noise.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
The next person would be Feliz Tavar, and I'll allow him to talk.
Okay.
So you.
Yeah, thank you. I unmuted myself. Thank you. I, I just wanted to say I agree with them on, on the issue of parking. We have very little parking, and not many of us have driveways. And if it wasn't for having a multi-SUV style vehicle, I wouldn't be able to use my driveway because it's just not built for a car. So we have to park in the street, and with so little parking, we've, we've had lines of people from side. You know, I, I love having these establishments in our community. I love them. And I'm very thankful we have such a vibrant community of such great, great things going on. But I'm very concerned with how it'll impact our street, and I just don't trust having that parking lot there that we're going to, we're going to see those results. It troubles me. And then to have, anytime we have construction, it disrupts our whole little area because it's so hard to get around. So, so the construction of getting that parking lot in, and it, it's a concern. And again, I don't want to downplay the, the value of their establishment. I think they're great. And I know they're world-renowned, and I'm very proud to have them in Maplewood. I'm just very concerned with putting a business there like this on that corner. I've complained enough about Dobbs, and finally, I've been on this street for 16 years now. And it took 14, maybe 15 for Dobbs to finally get those, those adjustments so we can actually see past the corner to make a safe turn onto Manchester. So, you know. Yeah, I, I personally addressed that with Dobbs several times, and I'm, I'm pleased they finally somewhat fixed it. But there's still some visibility issues there at times. You know, it just depends. So it, it's a very major concern from another person on this block, another family, another household, that, that it's going to disrupt parking on a very, very extremely difficult to park on street. So, so I just wanted to note that and address it and say my piece. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else queued up to, for this particular public hearing?
Yeah, we have Paul Kesselhorst. You can go ahead and unmute Paul.
We can barely hear you. Okay, we're going to move on. And Paul, if you are listening, there's an opportunity to talk during the, both the public forums, the one at the beginning of the meeting and the one at the end of the meeting. So right now, no one can hear you, so it's not that we don't want to. So if you have something to say, join us during the public forum session.
Yeah, we have one more. Abby S.
Okay.
And just a quick reminder, anybody that's speaking at the public forum, just state your name and your address for the record, please.
Thank you, Sean.
Abby, you can go ahead and unmute yourself. You there?
Can you hear me?
Yep. Yes.
So this is Abby Steingerby. I live over on 2629 Lyle. Yeah, I, I echo Brooke's concern with noise and road usage and places' concerns with parking. Even when side project used to, obviously before coronavirus, used to have events, our road would get lined up with cars. I personally had to put reflectors on either side of my driveway because people will literally block our entire driveways in and just not pay attention. Our street is insanely hard to maneuver, very small, very rough, and not to mention with the proposed construction on the corner of Lyle on the other end is that Madge, I think, or Margaret, I always get them twisted. But if that were to occur at the same time as working on this and increased traffic on the other side, this would become a very unpleasant place to live for those few months. And I also just have a concern with the increased traffic on that side, on just leaving Lyle alone. Half the time, you just end up having to turn right and circling all the way back if the other side is blocked off, or turning around and going through the Blue Ducks alley to get to the other side. So that's already difficult. How will increased traffic going in, especially with a drive-through situation? It doesn't look like there's any plan to connect this and taking out that wall to connect to White Castle's parking lot. So how will increase traffic there? I mean, it's a residential neighborhood and putting a very, like a, and again, 100% want to echo the fact this is a really exciting business. I love side project. I'm glad they're in the neighborhood. It's just really close for comfort, especially when we're already faced with possible little bit of chaos with possible house construction happening on that other corner. So those are my main concerns echoing sound concerns and just neighborhood. Our road already gets, I've, I've wanted to ask for a speed bump on our road because people still think that they can cut through to, I'm assuming Sutton from our road. People disregard the sign to not block the road. They don't understand, and they, they swerve through it 45 miles per hour on that tiny road. So I think I'm just concerned bringing more people to that end could just cause a huge cluster.
Okay, thank you, Abby.
We have two more. We have Paul back.
Okay.
I'm going to bring him on here in just a minute.
Okay.
All right.
I've also received word that Corey King and Bill Barnes are.
Corey has his hand raised, so I'll, I'll bring him on next. Paul, are you there?
Paul, we can't hear you.
All right, well, we'll try. We have another public hearing, so you're more than welcome to join that one.
And just the council's aware, they're looking at about seating for about 35 people. They're going to have two people in the kitchen, three people, a waitstaff. The total parking demand per our current code would be 14 spaces for that, and they're going to have, they're providing 25. So when I said that they're going to have excess parking, that'll give you an idea of what the excess parking is.
Corey's on now.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, perfect. Sorry about this. Yeah, sorry. Hi, Corey King. My wife Karen and I own Side Projects. For all those listening, thanks for having us. Apologies for being a little bit late here. I had two crazy kids, and I missed the invite. So, so sorry. But I wanted to address some of the, the concerns, obviously, about what we're trying to do over there. And just, I know that parking on Lyle has been an issue before. And really, the main reason for us to even look at this property was to expand our parking, to get more people off of the streets. You know, being where Side Project's already located down at the end of the business district, you know, we're not as close to the main huge public parking lot that everybody else is. And so the, the real reason why we first even started looking at this property was just to expand the parking as much as we possibly could to get as many parking spots as we possibly could to alleviate that, that demand on the, the streets nearby there. And then going forward with that, you know, our, our limited hours, you know, we're not open till bar closing time, if you will. You know, the 1:00 to 1:30 stuff, we like to close earlier because that's just our, our model. We decided that it would be good to even use that building over there as opposed to just making it a parking lot. Obviously, with the talk of Maplewood and everything and teaming up with Elmwood to do pizza as well over there. So we were hoping to, you know, expand our parking, but at the same time also, you know, create another, you know, another atmosphere, another feeling, another extension of Side Project slash Elmwood right here at that end of Maplewood, which hopefully overall, we thought would maybe be beneficial to, you know, not only the community, but alleviating some of the parking issues and trying to just negotiate, you know, the limited space that fortunately, you know, Maplewood has provided us. And I, and I hope that clears up anything. Like I really, we don't want to create more problems for Lyle by any means. I wanted to do the opposite, you know, by giving an actual spot for people. Because right now, our only parking is, is just public parking. And unfortunately, I, I'm really sorry when people do block driveways and stuff like that. Obviously, we would do anything. We don't want that. We never allow that or want any of that to happen. So hopefully, that this parking lot would alleviate a lot of that issue and give us a lot more space just because of, of our demand. Does that clear any of those questions up for anybody?
Great. All right, thanks, Corey.
Sorry, thank you.
Uh huh. All right. Barry, I guess we can move on to the, to the next public hearing.
Barry, you're muted. Barry, Barry, you're muted.
I was pretty sure I hit unmute. Item number seven is public hearing to hear citizens' comments on a request for a conditional use permit to allow a graphic and package design firm and binding company at 3212 Sutton Boulevard. Is there anyone in line for that?
There are no hands raised for this public hearing.
Okay, in that case, we'll move on to item number eight, which is the first of two public forums. And please state your name and your address, and then also keep your comments, if you can, to three minutes. And, and try not to necessarily repeat what other people have said. So my guess is that there's going to be a few people in line for the public forum, so let's get started with that.
Yeah, just make sure that you raise your hand through the Zoom app so I can get you on the queue. It looks like we have. Huh?
Is Barry keeping time?
Barry, you going to keep time?
I can do that.
Great. Dave and Louise DJ. And I can't read it all on my screen, but that's, hold on a second here. No, maybe not. We have one hand raised. One sec here. Just want to make sure. Yeah, Kevin Sullivan. I will bring him on. All right, Kevin, you there?
Yes, I'm there. Thank you, Mayor and council members. I had just, I usually get the, the agendas and reviewed the comprehensive memo that Anthony prepared with respect to the unhoused complaint and discussion. And I think it was shocking to a certain extent. You might have heard, you know, some about some things happening, but you know, my, I just wanted to share that. You know, while my belief system, and I'm sure many of the people who live in Maplewood have the belief system that, you know, the unhoused should be treated with dignity and respect and with compassion. You know, I think they also have to face consequences if they're breaking the law as well. And I would express concern with respect to our small businesses who might face negative effects if there are, you know, excessive solicitation or, or, you know, violence that I've read about in the memo. Also, the park, the park, the, the parts of the memo with respect to the police reports on things at the parks, I find very troubling, especially having two children that, that, that go to the parks. And I think our parks are one of the best things about our city is that they're easily accessible, they're, they're well-maintained. And, you know, I, I just think I commend, you know, that the, that the police department has a social worker and is utilizing her, and it looks like providing the help that's needed. Because, you know, as, as all of us know, a lot of the, the unhoused, it's, it can, there can be, you know, mental, mental disease and mental illness, and also substance abuse. And, you know, trying to address that through our service, through our, our city services is very commendable. But I just wanted to express my concern that, you know, with small businesses facing what they are during this pandemic, that, you know, I think they need support. And, and I also think, you know, we need to keep attracting more and more people who want to come to Maplewood. Because I do think, you know, we have one of the, the best cities, the best communities in the metropolitan area. And I think people want to live here, but there's a concern if there's bad things going on in parks and things like that that maybe people would stay away and go somewhere else. So thank you very much for your time, and we're certain.
Great. Yep. We have another one. Dave and Louise DJ and Trinity Schmidt. And I will put them on here in just one sec. I just lost them. There they are. I'm going to allow them to talk.
There. That's the button I needed to hit. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. I'm just Ann Louise Schmidt. We have the whole family on there. But honestly, our whole family has a stance where we really do want Maplewood to stand out. We don't want people to come to Maplewood necessarily. We don't want people to come to Maplewood necessarily just because of the small businesses kind of backpacking on what the person just said. But we would like people to come to Maplewood because we are compassionate community who's right here on the border of St. Louis City. We are for supporting the unhoused. We are for the unhoused being free to not conform just to our idea of how things should go. People, we might have an idea of how someone else should live. I think the unhoused have a harder time. I don't think they choose to be unhoused. I don't think they choose to be addicts. It's interesting, just like minutes before this meeting, then I think it's the yelling couple who have been talked about in this report, which in this report, also, I'm not sure that we can prove that all of this negative activity is simply from the unhoused. That's one concern I have. Because, so there was a couple yelling right out front. I went out and see what was happening and and the woman was shaking. She was so scared. I offered to walk her home and she was telling me that the guy always is yelling at her because he's hurting her. But she's stuck in the relationship. She can't get away. There's so much, she was frail, she was shaking. She looked, she, I I don't know all the signs of somebody who uses drugs, but to me, she did appear to have potential of trouble with addiction. So there's so many layers here, and these people need help, not condemnation. I would love for us to be known as a compassionate place and not a condemning place. Not as the new white flight, let's make everything look nice and neat and hide the negativity. But as the hey, we face the negativity, what we think is negative, what we we white middle classers deem as negative is somebody else's actual life. And and they might be doing the very best they can. And I would love for us to be known as the community who helps the unhoused and takes a trash can in and helps them pick up after themselves and things like that.
Thirty seconds, please.
Like, yeah, I have a feeling my time's almost out. And but I think that's pretty much all I've got my thoughts around my wrapped around right now, so thank you for listening.
Okay, thanks, Ann Louise.
Okay, next is Kevin Sullivan, and I'll bring him on.
He's already spoken.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry, I already spoke. I don't know if I gave my address, but it's seventy three forty three Flora. Thanks.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Kevin. We have Don on. Put him on. Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for having me. Don Miller at seventy three eighty Flora Avenue. I think some things are maybe getting conflated here, and I think we need to maybe try to keep some of this separate. I totally support what we do with the pantries and things like that. I donate to those regularly. Have no issue with any of that. But I think some of these other issues that we're talking about, regardless of who's behind them, I think we need to be very realistic and respect not just homeless people, but also residents of Maplewood who want to feel safe. I spoke to a woman in the parking lot of Schnucks tonight who lives over in Bruno. And her thirteen year old daughter came home a week or so ago, and she had been at Ryan Hummer Park, and there were discarded needles all outside of the bathroom there. I also heard from another friend of mine who lives in Maplewood, excuse me, that last week she was in Kellogg Park and witnessed a drug deal go down between some teenagers who smiled and nodded at her when she looked over there. So I know these things are anecdotal, but I do keep up on social media with Maplewood, on the Maple Good page and some other ones, and I'm hearing this more and more and more. And I, one thing that stuck with me a few weeks ago is a resident who's been here for over seventeen or eighteen years and said, this is not the norm for Maplewood. These are not things that commonly happen. So I, while we don't want to demonize the homeless, and I don't think anybody here is doing that, we also want to respect taxpaying citizens here and the right to feel safe in their own neighborhoods. And I think some of that perhaps is getting lost in some of these conversations. This is my first time at the council meeting. I'm glad that I came to it and got to hear concerns from other people. But I think we really need to start to listen a little bit more to all voices and not just some select ones who might have a different point of view. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don. All right. Next is Shana Jones, and I'll bring her on.
Hello, yes, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Shana.
Shana Jones, seventy six fifty nine Fork Avenue, known as the grab and go table lady. I just want to I I I don't know what I want to say because I read this report, and once again, I'm I'm still learning Maplewood. But your report, like the young man that just was on, said that, you know, a lot of things, again, are misconfused and everything. And I see Maplewood, they stress, we had two to three unhoused, now we at twenty to twenty two. I would say, and this is stuff that's facts, and I knew y'all talked to Department of Human Service, Mr. Yusuf today earlier. Between me and Mr. Yusuf, four of the unhoused that was here in Maplewood that was staying in Kellogg Park and over by Yale, we relocated them two weeks ago. I have been out on the streets outreach, talking to my unhoused community, trying to reach the ones that want help and also talk to the ones that's been here. Where I have come to realize is most of the ones that's unhoused, that y'all count, y'all twenty twenty two, however y'all get your number, they live here in Maplewood, and some of them have just go to their auntie house, their auntie house, or they just stay on the streets. I really, it really disturbs me that everything that in this report that I read, especially when you talk about Walmart, they stealing. And they say they unhoused. I have personally talked to the general manager for Walmart because they have partnered with the grab and go table, keep pushing to, you know, keep food down here, that the rates of petty theft in this area has gone down. So I just hate that Maplewood, whoever put out the verbiage that the unhoused is the cause of a lot of things. I have seen a lot of the person, I had a robbery at my house that's not in the report that I reported to Maplewood Police. And the guy stayed right here on West Bruno. He'd been living in this neighborhood for over fifteen years. He had just been released, and he wasn't unhoused. He just decided to violate my home. So I I really feels that we need to not categorize everybody as unhoused that's doing something wrong because it's typical Maplewood people that's doing drugs and neighbors. And I think right now, because of the coronavirus, a lot of people are at home and they see it. They could see what's been going on in their neighborhood and it's been here. And I've been out on the streets. I've been out past ten o'clock doing outreach with the county because I'm on the C O C board. And I have been working my butt out to see what's going on in Maplewood. And I really would say, most of the people that I encountered that are doing drugs and everything, they are pulling up into a Maplewood resident. So I I really would love to not categorize our unhoused members to some of the stuff that's going on. Because most of the people that's doing, breaking the law and everything are people that's living in Maplewood, paying tax money and pay rent, and they just come out in the day or whatever and do just things that is uncalled.
Twenty seconds, please.
So that's about, that's all, Mayor. That's all I want to just put out there. But we do have the resource with the C O C. I hope y'all got the information, and we are here to help with y'all unhoused population.
Thank you, Shana.
Thank you. No problem.
Okay. Next is Serena Elise. Let me put her on.
Serena.
Yes, I can.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Serena McKenda. I live at twenty four twenty five Bellevue, and I have lived in Maplewood for most of my life. My grandfather is Timothy Dunn, who spent many of his years on the city council and devoted many of those years to projects like MetroLink. And I cannot say that any of this is new. I I've seen this for the entire time that I have lived in Maplewood. The only thing that has been different is the response from the community. And if, when my mother was out of her mind on drugs and no one cared because she was a white woman, if I had a place where I could go and get food, I wouldn't have had to have a job at eleven to survive and not starve. And these are things that we we talk about, the risk of needles at the park. We could be installing Sharps containers or going one step further and allowing a clean needle exchange. And I'm sure that a program in the area would be willing to help us do that. We can't just keep making it more difficult for people in vulnerable situations to survive. We have to start meeting the needs and hoping that some of that will ease the desperation that leads to a lot of situations people are uncomfortable with.
Hey, Serena.
Great, thank you. All right. And Gina LaRose, bring her on. Gina, you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you. So my name's Gina LaRose. I live at seventy three ninety Flora. And I just, I'm gonna keep my comments pretty brief. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of of really great and passionate things that are being said. I think that, you know, our community is so lucky to have someone like Shana who's working so hard in the community. We have, you know, Maple Good is doing really great things. I know there's been some collaborative efforts already with Maple Good and some other resources around, and I'm grateful for that. I think that what I'm mostly hearing from folks is that they're feeling a little bit afraid. And I I think that safety has always been one of the things that has been like the strongest attribute of this community in a way. When we conducted our public safety survey with Maplewood Community Builders three years ago, people overwhelmingly felt pretty safe here. And I do think that there is an impact of the economy starting to tank and people being at home more and being outside more. And so there's, this is sort of the perfect storm of of people noticing crime and being really worried about it for legitimate reasons. So I just, I think that something we might consider moving forward, because I know there's a lot of efforts being put out there to try to figure out solutions, and I appreciate that, is the fact that we do have this P P money, and that is for public safety. And I'm wondering if there's any way we can think about pulling some resources from that that allocated money and and help our social worker. I understand she's serving not just our community, but a bunch of communities, and probably is feeling overwhelmed if she's anything like any social worker that I know in that situation. So if we can find a way to pull some resources and and come up with some creative solutions, I love the idea of the Sharps container. I know that we have those at the public library already. So I think that's, you know, there's definitely some avenues we can explore, and I think that thinking about using some of that money might be useful. All I have to say. Thanks, guys.
Next is Sarah Bowman. Sarah, you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Great. Thank you for the opportunity to share some thoughts. I'm at seven three one one Flora. And I'll just start by saying that I absolutely support a blended approach of solutions that can address the needs of the unhoused while also keeping the needs of our neighborhood safe. I have a significant concern having a toddler, a curious toddler. We adore the parks, but often, she's often a few steps ahead of me. And if there's a case of needles being disposed of in our parks, I'm terrified that she's going to pick one of those up before I can get to her and intervene. So that's just my personal example of how, you know, the concerns of some, the dangers of some of these activities would impact my life directly. So I think, well, what can we do about this? And I wonder, is it possible to serve this population through locations other than our parks? So that our parks don't become alternatives to housing, that they're not, they're not, you know, that the restrooms aren't used improperly or used at all. That I that I just think that there needs to be a separation between what I'm hearing of how how some of the pavilions are being used and that it's not really matching the intended use of it. So are there locations or institutions that we can leverage structured, proven methods to support the unhoused that will will help improve this situation for our community overall? Also recognizing that handouts are a tool to build rapport and and build relationship with the unhoused to hopefully get to a greater an ability to solve the greater issue, whether it be mental health issues or substance abuse issues or economic challenges. So I have concerns that handouts and distributions through our parks and pavilions, that's just a grab and take model, doesn't really help build that rapport. And then to close, I would just ask that whenever there is a plan in place, I'm particularly interested in finding out how citizens can support that. Because I would very much like to take an active role. But at this point, short of, you know, calling the police officers when there's an issue, I'm not really sure how to support. And I also don't think that everything needs to go through our police office. I'd like to know what that plan is and how, what role citizens can play in that.
Thank you, Sarah.
All right. Oh, now we have Chastity. I'll bring her on.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can, Chastity. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Chastity Maddox. I live at twenty two twenty nine Blendon Place, the very last street of Maplewood. I share a zip code with several other streets that are actually the city of St. Louis, as many of you know. I grew up on the other side of Maplewood, twenty five forty eight Gerhard. I came to Maplewood as a homeless child to live with my grandparents. And when I came to Maplewood as a homeless child to live with my grandparents, it was difficult. They faced occupancy issues. They faced custody issues to even get me enrolled in the school. But they prevailed. And with the help of City Hall in Maplewood, they were able to get occupancy for me to live in the home. My grandfather had owned his home for several years, so he was grandfathered in. With the help of the social worker of the school, they were able to get temporary custody of me so that I was able to go to the school. And now I am a resident of Maplewood. Now I am a homeowner of Maplewood. Now I am a mother of children who are going to Maplewood schools, who are going to graduate Maplewood school like I did. So I just feel like Maplewood has been a place of compassion. And some of the crime that has been mentioned has been going on here for a long time, especially down in my area because I am on the Maplewood city border. And it's very hard to get services down here. It's very hard to even get police to respond. When I dial nine one one, I have to tell them that I'm a Maplewood resident to even get the police to respond. So I know that, you know, we're in a pandemic and times are tough for everybody, and I just wish that we could all come together and take a different approach so that maybe some of these people that are unhoused can become like me, can become taxpaying citizens who pay the same amount of taxes as everyone else to live here in this great city. I I want to continue to live here, and I live here because of the community. I stay here and raise my children here because of the community. Everyone that I know from high school has pretty much gone on, but I stay here because of this community, because this is home, because this is what, who wrapped their arms around me when I didn't have anybody else to wrap their arms around me. And I just wish that we could take a different approach at this and look at all the great things that Maplewood has done through the years, like Joe's place. You know, like working with the school district on the children that are homeless and and not just worry about the children that are homeless, but worry about the childrens that are homeless as families, because there are families that are homeless. And these are families, these are families that have called Maplewood home their whole lives too. So just, you know, that's, that's all I really got.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We now have Mary Coontz, and I'll bring her on. Mary, you there?
Oh, my God, am I really?
Yeah, you're on.
This is Mary Coontz at seventy four eighteen Maple. Tony, honey, mute right now. Tony Coontz, who was the head bus driver at Maplewood Richmond Heights, is my husband. And my daughter is Rachel Ward, who has an amazing position in the school district. All of my children went through All of my children went through Maplewood, Chastity was in Rachel's class. Ben Estrada, the social worker who must have helped Chastity. I homeschooled all my kids except Dave for one year and Rachel and Ben's worked together. So this community, everything everyone has said is, is just amazing. We are different than anybody else, but I'm gonna tell you what, I wanna meet you, Sarah Bowman. I wanna have coffee with you out on the pavilion because, honey, Maplewood was rehabbed in the school district. And I loved Linda Henke, I know it was a bloodbath here. She rehabbed us, she gentrified us, but really she didn't ask the community what they wanted. God bless you Linda, I love you if you're listening, but you did so much. You made our schools like private schools and our, and our district now is like Clayton and all of our activities are like Clayton. But guess what? We aren't Clayton, we're Maplewood. We're right here, we're the hood, we're Maple weird. We're right next to the city. The demographic of us, if you look at us somehow, we're like the city, we're not like the county. We know it, we're a small town, we're a county, we're the city. We have always had these drugs. Twenty years ago, I did parents' teachers, honest to God. I went into the Yale Apartments, right there where Chastity's talking about. Whoever the guy was that was being pissed off about the, his place has been drugged for years. Poor Charisse lived there with her little children and there was a fire. And you know what? The Maplewood police officer, he died in a heart attack going to somebody's funeral. I don't remember, an old crusty, mean guy. And he called me and Christie Cram, like in the PAT office, and he said, Christie, would you come get these kids? I don't wanna, come on, I don't wanna take them in. This woman was PTSD, she was in a fire, she's bipolar, she has two little boys. And he didn't, he didn't rat her out and we helped. This is Maplewood and this underbelly of our haves and have-nots has been going on forever. And I'm gonna tell you what, I go to Maplewood United Methodist, I, I go to Maplewood United Methodist Church and my pastor, Kim Shire, and please pray for her. She said to us one day, are there still haves and have-nots in this church? We pride ourselves at Maplewood United Methodist, letting people with funny teeth and who smell, and it doesn't matter, we love everyone. We open, there's always room at the table, is there really? I have never gotten to know anybody unhoused, and I hate that word. I haven't gotten to know my neighbors that hang out on the street a lot. I don't know if they're housed. They're couch surfing, they have an apartment here, they, they're staying with their uncle, then they get kicked out because their uncle's on drugs or they're on drugs. They are people. And I had the privilege of forty hours in this Sutton bus loop, where it used to be a bus loop. I remember guns, drug houses, everything. And I'm gonna tell you, I was down there for forty hours serving food for MRH, underprivileged children, and none of the children's parents showed up, very few. We had the lovely, but you know who came?
Can you wrap it up, please?
Yes, hungry people came, hungry people. I put out food and hungry people came. These are people, these are people. Somebody's drug addicted son, somebody's mother who's frail, please. These are people. This is Maplewood. We can be known for the community who really, really loves their neighbors. I'm sorry, I was so bad, but you know, this is hard. This is a pandemic. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
All right. We now have Nikki Leon, bring her on. Nikki Leon, are you there?
Hi, I'm here, but I'm sorry, I didn't sign up for comment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. You had a race.
No worries. Thank you, I appreciate it.
No problem. All right. And we have Abby Estes, I'll bring her on.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Right, so this is Abby Steigerby, again, I live on two-six-two-nine Lyle Avenue. Me and my partner, we have lived in Maplewood here for a few years now and we absolutely love this place. And one of the reasons we do love it is that it's a very open-minded community with a lot of different types of people and it isn't reflective of most of St. Louis County. It's the only reason we live here. And it's, it's to us no different than living in the city of St. Louis. It's, you know, just right on the edge there. But I will be quite blunt, and then there has to be other options beyond calling the police for these situations. And I agree with things that have already been said, these are not always unhoused people. These are, and as everyone else has said, we are living in a pandemic. People are losing money, they have lost jobs, they have lost family, they have lost friends. And it is a very natural thing to turn to alternative methods of healing yourself and making yourself get through a really difficult time. So if there has been any sort of increase, I would strongly consider that as a purpose and, and I agree that compassion first. But what's concerning me is hearing that there is an absolute utter lack of alternative resources. Because just with incidents that have happened in the last few years, not necessarily with our police department, but with neighboring police departments, I hesitate to call nine-one-one. I generally do not call the emergency line. I just, if I'm reporting a noise complaint, I'm not going through nine-one-one for that here. But what I would love is another number to call for someone who needs aid, someone who needs a trained counselor, someone who needs, if there is someone approaching me who needs help, who does not have something, I do not wanna call nine-one-one. So it, it does go back on the citizens and I, you just have to hope that that person asks a nice person. It is, that is truly what I wanna see in this community. I wanna see coat racks outside of businesses like I see in the city. Just leave a coat or leave winter gear. I wanna see more food tents. That's the kind of community I wanna live in. It's the community I wanna stay in. It keeps me here and I am very, very thankful to hear, overall, the comments have been very compassionate and that people wanna keep this, this community like that. So my one main question and my one concern is that what will Maplewood do? This is always not, I won't even wanna call it a problem. It is an issue, it is a situation that has to be facing every community. And what is Maplewood going to do to create alternative resources, trained intervention counselors for domestic abuse incidents, homelessness and unhoused issues, people who need services for their children? That is what we need to be looking at. And I do hope that the answer to this is not increased policing at parks, or else I will stop using parks in Maplewood. So I,
Twenty seconds.
So thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Abby.
Right, now, one sec here, we have Steve Trummis. Okay, I can do that. Steve, you there? Looks like you're on mute.
Okay, I'm on mute. Can you hear me all right now?
We can.
Okay, thanks, folks. All right, just a couple of comments. Steve Trummis, seventy-four thirty-eight, he has Hazel Avenue. I've lived here for about twenty years. I appreciate all the comments, although this does sound more like a community meeting than it does a city council meeting. I would just remind people of the civil contract between citizens and the city council. There is a civil contract that exists in every, in every community that requires the city to do certain things and it requires the residents to do certain things. If those things don't happen, a city cannot exist. However, a lot of the comments I've heard tonight are fantastic comments and I stand side by side next to anyone that wants to implement any service that can help folks that need help, especially folks that want to take advantage of those services or can take advantage of those services. I think it's a little bit funny that we're having this lengthy conversation here in the city of Maplewood, considering that the concept of homelessness is affecting other cities around this country far more significantly than it is in Maplewood. I think there are many other places where we can look at to learn from and to come up with solutions. I go to San Francisco, before COVID, I went to San Francisco probably three or four times a year. I will tell you, that is probably the weirdest city and most beautiful city in the country. And it is probably the city that is suffering from the greatest problem with unhoused people right now. So there's a lot about, I would, I would encourage the city council to reach out to other cities that are dealing with this in a much greater level. Also, since the last time we had this meeting, I spent time reading through the city ordinances. If you haven't done that, I would suggest that everybody do that. I would like to see more city ordinances that do not respond specifically to unhoused people, but respond specifically to actions that people do, any people. If there's somebody that's sleeping inside the gutter of my street, which I saw the other day, I would like to see an ordinance that deals with that. If there are people that are defecating on sidewalks, I would like to see an ordinance that deals with that. If there are people that are harassing people that are trying to frequent businesses downtown, I'd like to see an ordinance around that. This has nothing to do with unhoused people, this has to do with actions that anybody does. If there's people dealing drugs in parks, I'd like to see an ordinance against that. So I think the situation here is that we just need to take a look at the individual cases. In the report, there are twenty unhoused people. I've talked to police officers before. There is no way that there's only twenty unhoused people in Maplewood and the police officers don't know who they are, don't know their name, don't know how many times they've had to deal with that unhoused particular person within the last month or three months. These are known entities. So I think we can just take what we know and
Thirty seconds.
Take, take what we know and put together what we know we should do and solve the problem and move forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
One sec here. We got a couple more people, it looks like. Okay, next will be Serena, and I'll bring her on.
Hi, Serena McKenda, again, twenty-four twenty-five Bellevue. First off, I'd like to say, Abby, there are a lot of people out there who would like to get in touch with you if you would like to link up with them on Facebook. And also I would like to say that we do have a lot of amazing businesses here in Maplewood and a lot of them are so beloved by people because they go out of their way to be community services and to really provide a community feel to them. But unless we are willing to back that up, then that is just performative justice and we really cannot be proud of something like that. We have to actually follow through and be the community that people like Abby want to be a part of.
Thank you, Serena.
It looks like we have one more. Sheila, excuse me, Suterwala. Sheila, you there?
I am, thank you very much. I just wanted to make a couple of comments. Sheila Suterwala, resident of Maplewood and Commonwealth and executive director of Artist First at seventy-one ninety Manchester. I would really like to give thanks and praise where it's due. I appreciate the effort and the time it must have taken for the Maplewood Police Department to put together that report for us. I appreciate their compassionate response. If, if you all read that packet that was put together for tonight's meeting, perhaps you, you saw what I saw and I saw compassion. Did they cite or arrest an individual who may or may not be unhoused for staying after hours in the park? No, they gave a warning. They did not overload our court system, our judicial system. They showed compassion. I've seen our Maplewood Police Department interact with different community members. And, and the previous resident who stated, we have twenty individuals supposedly that are unhoused and the police must know who they are. For the most part, I would say they do. And they have interacted with these individuals, whether it be unmet mental health issues or drug issues, drug addiction. From my experience, they have interacted with these individuals with compassion. And this is something I would like us to see invested in and, and supported. Previous residents talked about possible solutions, whether it be domestic violence, mental health issues, drug addiction. I would encourage all of us to invest and not reinvent the wheel, but invest in the resources that are available. And again, I will speak to the food pantry that is at the Yale Bus Stop, right across the street from Artist First. And again, Artist First monitors that bus stop and, and stocks it, the, the food pantry. We've gotten to know many of the individuals on that food pantry. And in our experience, only three of the individuals are unhoused. The rest are our neighbors, our neighbors that need assistance. So again, I just would like to give thanks to our Maplewood Police Department. I understand what the previous resident said about not, with everything going on in our country right now, not trusting the police. I would like us to make intelligent, informed decisions based on experience. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheila.
All right, that's it, Barry. Mary, Barry.
Okay. And people do have an opportunity later on to, we have a second public forum. Item number nine on our agenda tonight are announcements. Do we have any announcements?
Just have, have a few. I was just reminding everybody about the Mid-County Chamber Virtual Silent Auction going on between October nineteenth and the twenty-third. A way to support our businesses. And there's gonna be an award ceremony live on, let's see, on ten-twenty-three, from six to eight. That's when the, the award ceremony is gonna be. And the other thing is, the library book drop is closed until further notice. So just heads up to anybody that is gonna drop books off, you won't be able to do that because of construction that's going on. But you can still make arrangements with the library to bring the books back or to pick books up. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Karen. Any other announcements? Item number ten is the approval of the September twenty-second city council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. Item number eleven is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Frederick Tausig to operate a graphic and package design binding company at thirty-two twelve Sutton Boulevard.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? Anthony, this was zone single-family residential at one time?
Yes, it's still zone single-family residential.
And that's why we're doing the conditional use permit?
Yes, there's a provision in the code that states if the original intent and purpose of the building is commercial, in this case, it works the same. If it's residential and a commercial district, then you can go ahead and approve businesses through a conditional use permit.
Is the stipulation of ten employees maximum based upon the parking that they have?
It was just if they ever needed to come back in. Mr. Tausig has indicated he's, he has four and a half employees. It doesn't appear to get, it doesn't have any plans to get much bigger. It just would keep it capped to where if it ever got big enough, they'd have to come back before planning zoning commission. But there's no parking here, we have no concerns with that.
All right. Are there other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, an ordinance of the city of, city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Frederick Tausig to operate a graphic and package design binding company at thirty-two twelve Sutton Boulevard.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion will move on to its third and final reading at the next meeting. Item number eleven is Bill sixty-one
It's item number twelve, right?
I'm sorry. Yes, thank you. Item number twelve is Bill sixty-one forty-eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Maplewood, Missouri, granting a conditional use permit to Corey King, King of Site Project, Shared Pizza and Beer, to operate a restaurant facility at seventy-four sixty-nine Manchester Road and, and twenty-six fifty-three Lyle Avenue. And I'll entertain a motion to second the, to table the bill.
I need to make a motion to table for the reading of the findings of fact.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Are there any questions?
I, I guess I'd just like to know why we're tabling this. I understand that we've had complaints today, but are there outstanding issues that we're looking into?
This is just what we do on the last reading for, because we're doing a conditional use. So this is just
Before you read the findings of fact, as you go back in and then bring the bill back on the table.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to note, like, just to address all the residents' concerns that were, that they brought up in the public forum. Completely amenable to trying to work with them. You know, to find a solution so that parking is not, you know, an issue. I'm not opposed to resident only or anything like that. I just want to acknowledge that, that I think that we could find a solution, hopefully that, that works for them.
Jenny, I apologize. Typically, there's a reading of findings of facts before we
That's what I thought, that's why I was, didn't know why we asked for comments. So, okay, we'll table that until we get to
We'll have the discussion in a second. The findings of facts are the proposed use compli-
You haven't taken a vote yet.
We have to do a voice vote.
Okay. Thank you, Anthony.
We've got a motion, a first, a second, now we just need a voice vote, then we will read the findings of fact because we're going to table.
Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote?
No, it's a voice vote.
Voice vote.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This is somewhat new territory for me, trying to do both same
Now we will read the findings of facts.
Okay, the, the proposed use complies with all applicable provisions of this chapter. The proposed use at the specific location will contribute to and promote, promote the community welfare and convenience. Those use will not cause substantial energy injury to the value of the neighboring property. The proposed use complies with all, with the overall neighborhood development plan and existing zoning district provisions. The proposed use will provide, if applicable, off-street parking and loading areas in accordance with the standards contained in this chapter. The proposed use will not substantially increase traffic hazards. The proposed use will not substantially increase fire hazards. The proposed use will not overtax public utilities. And the proposed use will not place an undue burden on municipal services.
Mr. Mayor, now we need a motion and a second. A second to do the findings of fact after that. And we do a roll call on
Findings of fact. I make that motion.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
The findings of fact are approved.
Motion to bring the bill back on the table?
Second.
We have a motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Motion to adopt the bill?
Second.
We have a motion and second, is there any discussion now?
I insert my comments from earlier here.
I'm sorry, I've already written those down in the wall.
I'd just like to say that, you know, in all the years that I've been on the council, that our small business owners really have gone out of the way, you know, to alleviate neighbors' concerns, you know. Their, their goal is not to, to aggravate people, and Corey's done a, a real nice job. And I think with a little help from the city with, you know, signage and things of that nature, and addressing some of the other concerns, I think this will be a win-win for, for everybody. So that's what I'm going to lay that out there.
And I'd like to reiterate, too, that the, when, when these projects come in, they work very closely with, with City Hall and Public Works to address these issues. And we, we'll try and address all those as much as we can beforehand, and we will, and it won't stop there, we'll address issues that arise that might be unforeseen after the fact also. Are there any other questions or comments regarding Side Project? In that case, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wood?
Yeah.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Bill 6148 becomes ordinance number 5944.
Thank you. Item number 13 is Bill 6149, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Maplewood, Missouri, amending the Maplewood Commons Plan Unit Development Ordinance Number 5104, Section 2, uses A permitted uses to allow one full-service car wash at 2301 and 2321 Maplewood Commons Drive.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and second, are there any questions or comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pardini?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Crossley?
Yes.
Councilmember Fockingham?
Yes.
Bill 6149 becomes ordinance number 5945.
Item number 14 is unhoused complaint discussion. Who would like to start off?
Um, I'd like to start. Um, so I think we've heard from a lot of constituents who've also raised a really interesting idea about additional PFP funding in ways that we can invest smartly and wisely in a way that can be supportive of unhoused people and our neighbors. And ultimately, I am of the opinion, though, that Maplewood is not the most well-positioned government in this region to address our unhoused people and the services they need, but rather that we should think about relying on county services. Would you receive additional federal dollars than what we would receive for this issue? And ultimately have better staff, or better staff bandwidth, I should say. I'm not speaking to the quality of our staff, we're very qualified people, but rather they have staff who are trained and skilled and certified in this field and are subject matters, subject matter experts in their own right. And I would like to think that we could build a relationship with the Department of Human Services. And I know that, I think Anthony's made some headway in that today.
We absolutely have, and I want to thank you for pointing us in the right direction. We met with the Department of Human Services, we met with Yosef and several others, and we had a very productive meeting. We also explained all the steps we've been taking. And, and we're going to have future discussions as well. They also know and work with Chris Bevan as well, our social worker. So that was, there's also a nice connection there. So we're going, we have a very productive meeting, we're going to continue to meet with them. And thanks for pointing us in that direction.
It was mentioned several times that, you know, there are resources out there. And to let everyone know that's in on the, the meeting tonight, apparently we're, we're researching those resources to see what's available. One suggestion was to take a look and see also what other cities are doing. Because as mentioned by Mr. Trelmas, you know, we're not the only ones going through this process or are experiencing these, these particular issues. And so, and I don't believe that there's any comprehensive answers out there, but it's a combination of a lot of different variables that hopefully will add up to not only make us a compassionate community, but also allow us to serve and provide a, a safe environment for our residents and businesses. Who else would like to address this?
Sorry, go, Sean, go ahead.
Just real quick, I think, I think our, our, our city staff and police are, are doing a good job of creating relationships and partnerships with the services around us. And, you know, it's a learning curve, and it is difficult. And what's great is that citizens of Maplewood obviously have shown an enormous amount of compassion for all of this. And like, generally speaking, they, they like what we've been doing so far, and they just want to make sure we continue on and gather as many resources as necessary to, to, to hopefully impact in a good way the unhoused situation that has arisen. So, anyway, I just wanted to say, city staff and anybody who's helped, thank you. And, you know, I, if I run into anything that I can help out with, I certainly will and, and do.
And to add to that, Matt Nyber has been spending a lot of time, but I also want to make sure Chris Bevan has been very good. Matt and Chris have been working very closely, spending a lot of hours trying to, trying to help with this problem. Again, there's no easy answers, but Christine, and I wanted to make sure she was also recognized, just been very helpful.
I, I had actually, you know, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about this in the community. And I, I know that the city is working really hard to try to, to work on these issues. And I had actually, it's a very emotional issue, and I, I had a lot of thoughts on it, but if I just talked, I knew I wouldn't get my point across very well. So I wondered if you would, I wrote something out, if you guys would mind if I read it? I just start by clarifying for everyone that, you know, when the council had its previous discussion about these issues, no one on the council, you know, said they didn't want appropriate law enforcement measures taken against individuals in our community if those individuals' actions warranted it. You know, no one wanted our parks to be filled with needles or, you know, keeping our parks to be subject to or witness to acts of violence. What we did ask was that our police department, when they encountered people in the community who were suffering mental health or other issues, that they try to utilize other non-legal responses first, if at all possible. And I think it's clear that they've done that, right? The police department has made a significant time intensive effort to what, you know, to do what we asked, and they've utilized these other resources, especially Miss Bevan, to reach out to people and help line them with the resources they need. However, you know, as it was serious issues such as mental illness and drug addiction, those measures don't always work, or often work, and often not the first time. And even traditional legal measures, the police have employed, don't always work either. I think even the data provided tonight had instances where, you know, the police had ticketed or detained, you know, individuals. And then, you know, once after that, the, the behavior continued. And so, you know, and that's not surprising. These are really complex issues. And so, the question is, you know, if these issues aren't going away, even with both of those options, what do we as a community do next? How do we respond as a community? And so, you know, those voices in the community whose response is just to make these individuals go away and that we don't stand for this behavior and has to stop. You know, my answer is, no one wants this. No one wants people to experience the pain of mental illness or homelessness, to witness or experience violence. Their kids coming across needles on a playground. No one sitting here wants that, no one at the city wants that, no one in the community wants that. And that voice, to me, is one of privilege, and it's a voice of someone for whom government and other systems were designed to work, a voice of someone who's likely white, of someone who has the resources to seek the best care available. They suffer from mental health issues or addiction. It's a voice of someone who has no idea what it means to be one paycheck or one catastrophic event away from homelessness and no safety not to catch them. It's also a voice of someone who is providing no real solution, because no matter what the police do, even if they utilize legal options available, that's not going to make them go away. And frankly, as we get closer to winter, they're going to get worse. And so, we as a city and community cannot be committed to equity, only if it's easy or convenient. We have to be committed to equity, especially when it's hard and messy. And now is the time for us to come together and utilize the resources our community has and try to look for solutions beyond what we're trying. Are there education and other networks the city and police department can tap into to seek out other cities experiencing the same issues and figure out if what they're doing could work here? Can we as a city engage in a series of town halls and work sessions to maintain transparent and open dialogue about issues in the community and work with our citizens, together with them, to try to find solutions? Can we tap into our personal and professional networks to see if we know anyone who may have ideas that work? Can we break down the issues into smaller ones and look for solutions to the smaller issues and then attempt to make them more, the bigger issues smaller? The answer is we can if we commit to it. However, we have to be patient and kind with each other. We need to hear each other, we need to work together and find the best solutions we can during a time when nothing is easy. We need to come together and care for each other. It's not going to be easy. One thing I am confident of is that if any community can do it, this one can. So, thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. You know, a lot of people have spoken tonight. And the, I, I hope everyone that, that is watching tonight knows how to contact. You can contact all the council members and the mayor and the staff. And, you know, we're certainly want to hear what you have to say, and especially if you have ideas on how we can address some of these issues. And then Jenny also referred to, you know, meetings, town hall meetings. I think there needs to be more engagement with everyone involved in order to address some of these issues, address all of these issues. I'm not sure exactly what that looks like, but my guess is that council will be working on that.
I will add that, again, today, and, and we will, and I believe the police department would say the same thing. We are always looking, we don't, we don't claim to have all the answers, it is a complex issue. And so, that was the first thing we said today when we met with the Department of Human Services. Here's what we're doing, here's our thoughts. And if you guys have any comments, questions, concerns, or thoughts, you know, please let us know. So, you know, we're definitely open to any suggestions.
Anthony, I was just going to ask, that new program that we just heard about, I don't know much about it. It's called Police Building Bridges. Do you have any information that you could share with all of us about that?
Well, honestly, I could, but Lieutenant Nyber and our social worker, Chris Bevan, are in, we could possibly bring them up if you'd like. I mean, I'd rather have them explain it to you, it's their program.
I think it would be nice for other people that are listening in, maybe to hear, you know, about a new program, because it's kind of something that I was interested to know more about.
I can bring in Matt, and I'm sorry, who else?
Chris. Chris Bevins?
Hold on.
Yeah, to Karen's point, I think, and to reiterate some of the things that Jenny had mentioned, those of us on council are learning about some of the actions that the city has been working on. Only, you know, a, a couple of steps or about a, a less than a week of what the community is learning. So, so I think, you know, in order to increase transparency, as much information as, as we can get out there about the, the city's efforts, I think is, is going to help the, the conversation.
I do want to add one other thing to that, too. Besides this program that Matt's going to talk about, one of the prior public forum participants mentioned something about that we've been successful in finding housing and alternative spots for some of these people. We are trying, Matt is trying, and Chris is trying a lot of different things. One of the options we had with people that were repeatedly ignoring the, the park requirements is they were issued a summons, and, and we were basically said, hey, if you would meet with, with our social worker, Chris, we'll wipe the summons out, because we're not looking to be punitive here at all. And it worked out really well. In fact, that was one of our success stories. So we are trying any approach and any alternative approach to try to get people connected with Chris and just look for different methods to try to help the situation out. And I, I've heard Chris's dog, so I know she's on.
I'm sorry. Good thing I didn't say any bad words to that dog.
Would Chris or Matt, would you like to explain the, the program that Councilmember Wood asked, if that's possible?
Chris, I'll open the floor to you on that. And then I can add any comments, if you missed anything.
Sure, thank you. Thank you so much, everybody, for, for having me on. I really appreciate it. I'm just so impressed with, I'm impressed with all the comments that people have said so far and all the thought that people have put into this issue of, of, of our community and how we help people who are either unhoused or just struggling. So I really appreciate that. So I guess maybe I should explain my role probably if people don't know it, I could do that real quick. So my position is called Community Mental Health Liaison. And that is a program that started back in 2013 by the then governor. It's a Missouri statewide program. It only exists in Missouri. It is to pair a mental health professionals with law enforcement and court personnel. So I work in the law enforcement part of it. So when an officer, any officer that's out there that I work with can call me if someone has a mental health issue and I help get them to services. I'm the literal like link or liaison between the mental health community and the policing community. So I not only work with Maplewood, I work with Clayton, Richmond Heights, Shrewsbury, Webster, and actually all of St. Louis City. So a lot of the problems that people have been talking about, I've seen for years. I've been a social worker in St. Louis for almost 25 years. I've worked at BJC for a long time and I've worked with unhoused people for most of that time and people with severe and persistent mental illnesses. So that's my role with, with Maplewood and the other municipalities that I work with. And so I work a lot with Maplewood PD and really being progressive and also trying to prevent problems before they happen. And so one thing that we thought we would do is have a program where if people have a family member or someone in their household who has a mental illness and they would like to let the police know about that person and the best way to approach that person, what the person's triggers may be, what may be helpful if the police officers come to their home, we'll have a program where we meet before an incident happens with the family. They tell us what's going on with the person, what we can do to be helpful. And then when hopefully an incident won't happen, but if and when it does, the dispatch will, will know that this family or this household is part of the police building bridges program. And there will be a database of information that dispatch doesn't get, but the officer gets to say, hey, who was this person? What is their illness? What are their triggers? What are some of the things that tend to help them if PD shows up? You know, sometimes you want to go lights and sirens. Sometimes you don't. Sometimes it'd be helpful if I come, sometimes it won't. So it's just a really proactive approach to help people with mental illnesses have a more smooth transit, a smooth interaction with the police community. I will say that almost all of the Maplewood police officers are CIT trained, almost all of them, and they all work with me. So even before this, if they would go to the home of someone who had a mental illness, they'd either call me when they're there or they'll call me afterwards and I follow up with the family. So I always follow up with the family, no matter what, and try to get them linked to services. Sometimes they're like maybe already clients of BJC. Sometimes they, they need services. Sometimes I just need therapy. Sometimes they need, sometimes they need something else. So I always follow up with folks if, if the police give me a heads up. I saw someone that said that I didn't get a follow-up. Sometimes CIT officers fill out a CIT report on incidents and I don't get those till at least a month later. So that sometimes is a little bit of a lag, but you can always ask an officer if they come to your home for a, a mental health concern. Say, can you have Chris call me always? Because I'm, I'm always available to the community and to the police officers. So we're trying to be proactive. That's a long answer to your question, but there you go.
Thank you, Chris.
Okay. Is there any further?
Yeah, sorry. Can I ask a question? Chris, some of the feedback, we've, nice to meet you, by the way.
Nice to meet you too.
Some of the feedback we're getting is sort of talking about, you know, your own bandwidth, which is just maybe like a reality of the work you do. I think we'd be hard pressed to find a social worker who isn't over, who isn't stretched too thin. Is there a way for, for Maplewood to like invest more in this program so that we could access more of you or a coworker of yours or something like that? Is that an op, do you know if that's an option for the city?
Well, our initiative is paid for through the state. I get paid for BJ's, well, actually, let me explain that. The, the Coalition for Behavioral Health through the state of Missouri has 31 community mental health liaisons throughout the state. Each one of us works for a community mental health center. So I work for BJC Behavioral Health and we actually have four of us. So we just got a new worker on board and he'll be joining me with Maplewood as well. So there'll be two of us. And I'm actually not too busy. I mean, I mean, I'm busy, but I'm not too busy to answer most of these calls. So it's just a matter of people knowing that when the police get called to their house, they need to call the mental health liaison and then I'll get back to them. So there are two of us. And even if Maplewood, I mean, I could always use more money, you know, but, but basically we're paid, we're paid through the state. So unless Maplewood want to hire like a separate social worker, then they could also do that work. But, but I think, I think we have enough resources actually that if the officers would call, that we could pretty much meet the need.
Thank you. So I'm wondering now about the connectivity between officers and the homes they're visiting. So when an officer maybe senses that some additional support from someone like you, Chris, is needed, do we know how that conversation goes between the officer and the individual? Is there some like handout that's exchanged? I'm, I'm curious about like that direct point because it sounds like some of these issues that like we're hearing about could be resolved through stronger connectivity to you and the services you provide.
Lieutenant Nyber, do you want to address that?
Yes. So with this, are you familiar with the crisis intervention team? We go through specialized training dealing with these issues and these matters. So these officers have steps that he or she addresses when, when it deals with a mental health crisis or whatever it may be at that residence. They'll analyze the situation, they'll analyze the call. If the person needs immediate need for hospitalization, threats themselves or, or others, and they need to get a hospitalization, the officer will arrange for that individual to go to the hospital and then they'll complete an affidavit. Okay? There are time, many times that the officers will work it out with the family or the, or the person involved in the mental crisis will reach out to, to Chris on that. They'll place a phone call to her and Chris almost always answers her phone. So we may connect with Chris on the phone where she'll discuss matters on the phone with the officer or she'll come to the house. She just came to a residence just this prior week for a matter where we, we needed her assistance on to help get this person the hospitalization he or she needed. So I kind of hope that answered your question. These officers are trained what to look for. And then they'll make the decision. They'll, they'll try to discuss with the family. But a lot of times if the family aren't there, we have to make the decision what we are going to do with the individual involved in a mental crisis at that point.
Thank you. I think it does. So I'm, I'm wondering now if it, if, what, what do it look like for us to maybe quote unquote, over assume that we, that someone needs access to Chris? Like what if, what if it wasn't maybe as clear as like the CIT lays out for us or the CIT training is out for your officers if, when in doubt, call Chris becomes more of the model? Because some folks are still not quite getting that access.
That's okay. I mean, we, we really have always told people from the rollout of this initiative, if you have a question in your mind as a police officer, call us. We'd better, rather be called and say, nope, that's not our area of expertise than have something fall through the cracks. So it's easy to have a phone call. It really is. It's, it's not, it's not hard. It's, it's easy and you know, like Matt said, I most always answer my phone. I don't have very good boundaries. Police officers work all the time, but you know, so I kind of work all the time too. So they just call me, ask the question. And if, most of the times folks do need the help, so I usually follow up. And if, if follow-up is not happening, if anyone is listening, if follow-up is not happening, you can, you know, maybe contact Lieutenant Nyber or just make sure that you ask a CIT officer or any officer, because they all know me, to make sure they call. Because those CIT reports, again, unfortunately do have like a month lag, which is not a good, not a good, not a good system.
So the CIT reports that Chris is referring to goes through a database through St. Louis County. Okay? And this is a regional wide system database. So we are all aware, it's just not isolated to one area. So therefore, you know, whatever community may be, this, you know, the, the person suffering a mental crisis may be another community. So we have a better understanding so we can refer to that, you know, if, if they come to this community or vice versa. So that's the CIT reports he's referring to. But we do have two CIT coordinators that try to monitor our internal reports and we'll try to get the help that's needed or call Chris for follow-up or so we do have a couple of ways that we try to keep track of matters.
Okay. Thank you.
You can just sort of state for everyone who's listening and may not know, how many of our officers are CIT trained?
We have about 23 officers that are CIT trained. And this is a 40-hour course and there's follow-up training. And that unfortunately this year with the pandemic, training has been really cut in St. Louis County. So this is through St. Louis County that we access this training with other municipalities and the St. Louis County Police Department. So we have seven more officers that neither receive this training nor go through the training. But most of those are signed to the detective bureau. So they're not all the patrol officers with the exception of one that used to be on patrol are trained.
That's almost unheard of. I mean, Maplewood has an extremely, extremely high number of CIT officers trained. That is, that is phenomenal. I work with other munis. I mean, other munis do a really good job too, but Maplewood is right up there.
And this, this CIT has been around when I was another agency, I was the second class to go through it in 2003. So it's been around for quite some time and is just progressing and we're working on more and more.
Okay. Is there any further discussion from council? In that case, thank you, Matt and Chris. And and the information that you provided. Item number 15 is council communication. Do any of the council members have anything to communicate? Item number 16 is the mayor's report. I have nothing tonight. Item 17 is the city attorney's report.
I have nothing, Mayor.
Thank you. Item number 18 is the city manager's report.
Memo. And so the first one's pretty self-explanatory. Good news on refinancing the TDD bonds, the, we're going to take advantage of the low interest rates. And as I said, we typically, when you do a refinance, you can save two or three percent. We can save up to six or seven, at least those are the preliminary estimates. So hopefully we can pay that TD down earlier. That will be the, the savings we will realize will pay that down earlier. I just wanted to give you an update on that, on the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center. Again, with COVID, you always hear the negatives. This kind of presented us with a unique opportunity in that we had UMSO and SLU universities and an additional swim team that were looking for space. We have people swimming out there as early as six or seven AM. And between meetings, I looked out there at about 7:30, people were still swimming. For the first time, we're actually making money on the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center because everyone knows that that is a, you lose money on a pool, but the, the benefit is you provide the pool for your residents. So I'm, I'm working on negotiating some long-term agreements with some of these entities, which have indicated they want to do this. We've had them put money in. We were charging double maintenance fees for these and they've, they're happy to pay it because they love the pool. There's even discussions in the future. It's preliminary of possibly doing some sort of a bubble gym. So this could be a year-round complex. It would be good for, for revenue. It would be good for these swim teams and whether it be local area swim teams or universities or whoever wants to use it, they could use that pool. It's a state-of-the-art facility. It would also be good for the school district who uses a pool in the summer, but they can really only use it maybe for about a three-week period. They could use that year-round as well. We could also provide paddleboard training. There's a lot of options. We could do year-round lifeguard training through the Red Cross. There's just a lot of options. We're working on it, but it does seem promising. And I just wanted to alert you in case you hear something because I know there's a lot of area swim teams and I'll be having those discussions. I didn't want you to be surprised, but I would hopefully be bringing something to you in the near future. We're going to be doing our, our street contractor. I've mentioned before, it was probably the, the best local roads contractor we've had before. We used Spencer twice before, but this year there was a lot, there was next to no complaints. They did a fantastic job as far as the finished product and as well as alerting our residents. It was just almost a, a stress-free summer for local roads. And they actually came in underbid, which is unusual. Usually it's always change orders and trying to get more money. Going to take some of that and refinish Lindover Place. And that will also be done in our pool parking lot will be starting next Monday as well. We're refinishing that as well. And then the last thing is we had a, an excellent implicit bias training. We had about 15 employees take that and we're going to be making that known to or available for all city employees. The Dr. Shane Williamson, she's with at Lindenwood or she was when she taught the course, but she has accepted a position at Webster Grove School District and we will probably be holding additional seminars with her because she was, I talked to everyone that took the class or the training and everyone was very happy with that. And that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. Item number 19 is the second public forum. Sean, does anyone have their hand raised?
No, just use the raise your hand function within Zoom and we'll get to you. We do have one person. Becky Flynn. Becky, are you there?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I actually sent you guys an email yesterday because I didn't anticipate I'd be able to be at this meeting, but it's gone really long. So here I am. So I thought I would just come on here and kind of reiterate a little bit of what I put in the email. I'm not going to read the whole thing. But basically, you know, what I was trying to express in the email is that it's really important for us to be working with people who have experience with the unhoused, the mentally ill and the addicted in our community and in the greater St. Louis community. Somebody earlier mentioned not reinventing the wheel. Maplewood is a small municipality. We don't necessarily have all the resources that we need. But there are people out there that are willing to help, that are willing to show us best practices, you know, that are willing to work with us to kind of put something unique together for our city. One person that I reached out to is an old friend of mine, her name's Sharon Morrow. She's the vice president and director of Outreach for the Street Kitchen Community. She's also with Tent Mission St. Louis and St. Louis Winter Outreach. She's been working with them for years. She's done, you know, hours and hours and hours of both aid and volunteer work, working with these wonderful groups. And they've been working in Maplewood for years, whether or not people are aware of that. But these organizations have been helping the unhoused in Maplewood, the mentally ill in Maplewood as well, for a long time. She wanted to kind of get across that with COVID-19, winter conditions approaching, you know, flu season, evictions are going to be up. People who need resources, you know, that number is going to increase. And, and some people have also mentioned that maybe people are coming from downtown, you know, or other areas of the city into Maplewood. And she said, yeah, you know, there's 50% fewer beds this winter that are going to be available because of COVID-19. So people are, you know, moving to places. And I'm not saying that, you know, people are moving into Maplewood. We have unhoused here already. We have, you know, vulnerable populations here already. But we are going to see some movement because accessibility is low for tougher areas. So, I mean, basically, her suggestion in terms of best practices or models that they're looking at are this idea of allowing structured tent encampments. Lawrence, Kansas just approved a six-month permit for one of these tent encampments. She talked to someone in Kansas City yesterday and they were bringing it to their mayor at a meeting last night. And basically a structured tent encampment, you know, that's supported by hand washing, food and water, PPEs, potties, a fire ring, garbage cans and trash hauling will save time, money and and reduce crime and honestly, this encampment already exists in a way in Kellogg Park, I don't know, you know, I mean, I'm sure there's been a lot of talk about that, but there is clean water there and there's electricity there and there's shelter, so creating a tent encampment that, you know, the sole purpose is to provide for those people in times of need might be something that could look at doing if it's happening already sort of by default and this also provides a place where those who have the resources, those who work for organizations are able to find these people in one place, they know where to look for them and they can come and directly interact with them, provide services and offer help, they're not having to wait for the police to call, they're not having to, you know, go look in the woods or, you know, whatever, or wait for complaints, they can go directly to where people are and I would suggest, and this is just me throwing this in there, but you know, some of that prop P money could be used to support something like this and that's all I have, I just wanted to put that out there and and again, you know, reiterate that there are people doing this work and we don't have to rip our hair out trying to figure out how to do it, we just need to put the time in looking at how others are doing, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else?
Yeah, we have one more, Serena, you're in, Serena, you there?
Yes, I'm here, Serena McConda, 2425 Bellevue again, I would just like to say that I think that we, all of the citizens of Maplewood and Richmond Heights as well need those numbers for our social workers and other resources, I personally do not feel like calling the police is really almost ever a justifiable thing in most of these situations because of the risk once you get the police involved and although Maplewood police are better, Richmond Heights police, the police patrol these streets and they murdered Terry Tillman and others, so I really think that for for those of us who are concerned about that, even if we call BHR, I have called when a man was telling me he was at the MetroLink station and going to jump in front of a train and they just called the police and the police were asking if he had a gun and trying to find him and it it very quickly escalated and luckily he got away from them and was okay and is still alive today and got some help, but you know, we we don't really have the option of even calling BHR if we don't have those numbers and if the police aren't calling them, we need the access to call.
Okay, thank you, Serena.
Yeah, we have a couple more, hold on one sec. Sorry, I'm clicking as fast as I can and I'm, all right, and then it's Amber with come, hold on one sec and I'll bring her in.
Okay.
There you go, Amber, you with us?
I am, Sean, thank you, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, I am so grateful for this conversation tonight and I know everybody's tired, this has been a long and impassioned meeting, so I just wanted to provide a couple of recommendations around direct action solutions, both short term and long term, I know I was part of a call last week with some key stakeholders in the city and some community organizations around specific steps we can start to take, I wanted to throw out there that several cities I've done some research on are involving some of their existing committee and board resources, I would point particularly to the Special Business District Board as well as the Parks and Recreation Committee, two of our boards and commissions that are directly involved in supporting the areas where we're having interactions between housed and unhoused residents, to bring to the table those additional stakeholders in building community education around the resources that are available to us, I think it's a surprise to a lot of people to hear from Chris about the work that she's doing and about how to request her services and access the social worker through the police dispatch, so building both online and potentially posted and distributed resources that are consolidated and consistent, that business owners, residents and the unhoused are accessing sort of a consistent toolbox, I think would be really helpful and I'd like to engage again some of those boards and commissions that are already knowledgeable in that area, I say specifically the Parks and Recreation Commission because unhoused people are in parks for a reason and and this is a growing concern for parks boards throughout the country, these are locations where people congregate because they're safe and they have amenities and this is something that parks employees should be invested in in coming to the table and contributing their voices to that conversation, I want to throw out as well a a long term recommendation that I've been doing some research on and some others have kind of brought to my attention and discussed in some groups that I'm on, which is a local housing strategy, I think if we look sort of systemically at how we're addressing this issue, we need to consider a housing strategy that details the, a specific approach that the city will take to meet its housing objectives and to coordinate the actions of all city agencies and divisions that administer the policies and programs that specifically affect housing, so that would be zoning ordinances, building codes, permitting processes, property tax abatements, federal, state and local housing subsidies, a way to allow for economic growth and innovation while ensuring that all residents have access to safe and appropriate housing that meets their needs, I was struck in our conversation about the sun and development and and the fact that there was not an affordable housing provision built into that and the way that the conversation has has gone on from meeting to meeting, if we had a local housing strategy to provide a roadmap for those decisions, I think it would support the council's work, it would support the city's efforts, it would give us a consolidated outlined strategic approach to how to move those conversations forward and how to keep affordable housing in our community and how to build on those resources and develop more affordable housing, thank you.
Thank you, all right, and we have one more, Heidi Helmuth. Are you there, Heidi?
I am, thank you, Sean, I'm going to be very brief, I know everybody's tired, this has been a very long meeting, but boy, I've learned so much and I, all I want to say is how proud I am to be a resident of Maplewood, as everybody said, this is a complex issue, there's no easy answers, this could have easily been a discussion that devolved into an us versus them mentality, who's right and who's wrong, if, that's all we see in our society these days, but what I heard was respectful discussion, showing different points of views and just highlighting the complexity of what we're talking about, so I have no solutions, I want to try to be part of them, but I just want to thank everybody, our, the mayor and the council members, Chris, the police, the residents and the business owners for such a respectful discussion and it's just one more thing that shows what a wonderful place Maplewood is to live and I know that with the commitment I'm hearing, we're going to find ways to improve this, so thank you to everybody.
Thanks, Heidi.
Thank you. And that is it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Sean, that was item number 19, 20 is, I don't believe we need to hold a closed session.
No need.
I will.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn the second, all those in favor. Meeting is adjourned, thank everyone for attending tonight, I see there's still 37 people, 36, 35, 34, that have contributed tonight, so we appreciate the community getting involved, night.
Thank you.
Thank you.